Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, December the 1st, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasury.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated November the 17th, 2014. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have reviewed the minutes, and I have no changes or corrections.
I have reviewed them and make a motion to accept minutes as presented.
Need a second, please?
I'll second, sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Board, this evening, you have wastewater claims, docket of four pages dated December 1st, 2014, in the amount of $34,377.97. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none this evening.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated December 1st, 2014, in the amount of $34,377.97.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Under unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, we have a stormwater waiver request that we heard at the last meeting. I will open the floor up for limited comment from board members pursuant to that matter. Any comments or concerns?
I would have to go along with Westler.
I have to agree with the recommendation as well.
I ask for a motion to deny the request for exemption for the United Methodist Church.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. I'll also need a request for approval to send this letter to Pastor Hendricks on behalf of the Board of Sanitation.
And I do have a que-- will you be sending their findings along with the letter as well?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no new business this evening and no business already considered. We'll have comments from board members at this time, please.
I have no comments.
And I have none tonight.
Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
It is 6:03 PM. Meeting's adjourned. We will meet again on Monday, December the 15th, 2014, at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, December the 1st, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasury.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, board members. We have two sets of minutes this evening. The first set is a meeting dated Monday, November the 17th, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated Monday, November the 17th, 2014.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have a second meeting minutes. It's a special meeting minutes, Monday, November the 24th, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of claims. And Board, do you have a docket of claims dated December the 1st, 2014? Twenty-nine pages of claims in the amount of $1,176,589.12. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have no questions.
At review, I have no questions.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated December 1st, 2014, in the amount
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Under unfinished business this evening, we have insurance premiums for employees. I asked Kristin to come back this evening. At the last board meeting, we approved the insurance for next year. The only pending matter was, were we going to increase the premiums for employees by 5%? Or were we going to hold the line and not make any change in the premiums for the employees? Kristin, is there anything else? I know that the 5%, one of the options was to raise it 5% to kind of maybe offset what could happen next year or the year after.
Right. That's basically what I was presenting was, if we increase our build rates by 5%, we're just putting additional money into our trust, which is then available for our use in a future year should claims exceed what our expectations are. And that goes a long way to helping keep the cost to the employees at a moderate-- it's an attempt to keep the cost modest in future years.
Board members, do you have questions or comments concerning this?
I do have a comment. So, our employees received a-- and correct me if I'm wrong, a 2% increase one time in the last, how many years? Has it been?
Six or seven at least.
Five or six, okay. They got a 2% increase over the last five or six years.
Right.
What was the increase last year?
I don't know the percentage. Erin's asked--
What was the increase last year?
She's talking about your comp--
I'm talking about pay raise.
Pay raise.
2% pay raise. And now, we're going to increase their health insurance by 5%. So, we're basically taking away their pay increase, so.
The math does not necessarily support that. A 5% increase in someone's pay, like a family enrollee, would be about $285 a year. And I think we did some math on some rough numbers, and the 2% was far in excess of that.
Okay. So, Erin, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're kind of like the spokesperson for--
Sure.
So, what have you heard? I mean, you're with the employees every day. What do they want? Do they want the 5% increase? Or do they want-- what do they want?
Uh--
I mean, it's hard for me to make a decision for them when I'm not hearing anything.
What they would like is a 25% increase of their salary, but I know that's not going to happen tomorrow.
Me too.
However, you know, here's the great thing. We have great employees here because they all see both sides of it. Now, one side of it, they say, if it's an increase, it's smaller than it was last year, but we had an increase last year when they were trying to fix the numbers between the employee only and the difference disparity, I believe, between the-- we were actually paying the employee only, which we still kind of are, by like, what, 30 bucks, 20 bucks?
Twenty, 21.
$21. So, some of us, majority of us, saw an increase because your employee onlys are your largest group, correct? And then, your second largest group is your family or employee spouse?
Family.
Family. Which family, we saw a big jump last year, more than this is last year. So, they would prefer not to have an increase so they could actually use that raise towards something. Now, granted, a 2% of salaries, when it works out mathematically per pay, is itty-bitty. So, say this is $13, and we'll say roughly 200 bucks in each pay. That $13 does peck at it a little bit, so. But then, the question you ask them, well, in five years, or three years, if something happens, do you want to pay a 50% increase? And the answer is no. So, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, where does the-- where is it going to stop? I mean, insurance cost is going up. I kind of get it. I don't appreciate it, doesn't mean have to. But where's insurance going to cost? Would you rather pay a little bit of percentage increase now and then pay a-- than not pay as large increase later? Or their comment is, I'd rather pay no increase at all, but a little bit does help the stepping stone. But on the other hand, this is the first time we've seen a 2% raise, and it's longer for the fire department than five years. I want to say it's six and a half, if not seven.
Yeah.
So, they're kind of like, mm. You know, they're kind of stuck. I hate to say it, but it's kind of like, darn if you do, darn if you don't.
Right. So, my-- can I have a-- let me ask another question. This question is probably toward Dan and Kristin. So, we talked about the trust at the last meet-- at the last meeting, and there was, I don't know the exact term that you used, there was either a significant amount of money in that trust or an excess amount. Years down the road, are we able to pull from that trust to help subsidize some of these premiums?
Well, what we could do, if we had an adequate funding level, keep in mind, we get billed rate for each enrollee. And what we could do is we could dial that back as we needed to, which then, in theory, that could mean that we lower the cost to the employees if our trust was at an adequate funded balance. Right now, it's about $330,000, which would pay for about six months' worth of claims.
Okay.
Now, and I have a question because I still don't understand the answer. And I've already asked Dan this question, and he said against the law, I think, is the term he used. When we were in that meeting, I asked, we did an 8% overall insurance increase for this year's budget cycle. This is only a 4% increase for the city. So, what's that relate to numbers? And would that help us to move some of that 4% to offset the-- to build up that trust better?
Well, if I'm-- make sure I'm answering this right, Kristin. There's no increase to the city nor the employee if we don't do the 5% increase. Am I correct?
That's correct. He's talking about if you exercise--
Right. And my point is, there was an increase budgeted for health insurance, but I cannot take that increase and just write a check to the trust.
Oh, I understand that. But if the question at hand, though, still in my mind is, so if we did a 5% increase on employees, could we not change the formula to where it comes out to where the city pays a little bit more to help offset, and that money does go to the trust? Because it is earmarked for health insurance, and that is part of the health insurance stuff.
If they do the 5% increase, there is an increase to the city also. Am I correct on that?
It was 4%, yes.
Right, okay.
But if they do no increase, there's no increase at all--
No increase to employee, no increase to the city.
And then, that 8% sitting there of overall health insurance that we've increased. Now, I know dental's gone up a little bit on the city side, but not that 8%.
Right.
Brad or Mark, any input from your departments?
The board guys do not want to see an increase. They understand, like Erin said, that yes and no, but they would like to be able to see an increase. There are 2% they'd like to have this year.
Brad?
That's the impression that I got. Rodney Giffen was our member on the committee. I think he actually was supportive of the increase, but I don't think that was well-received when he brought that back to the department, so.
Well, as a former employee, I mean, I, you know, it was few and far between that we never got an increase in premiums. You know, next year, I understand the 5%, I understand that. And you know, next year, Kristin might come to us and say, hey, we have to bump this up 20%. And you know, that's just-- you just don't know.
Right.
And, you know, so I think that was a pretty decent recommendation. But I'll leave it up to the board on--
Let me--
May I?
No, my comment is, I don't think Kristin or myself, either one, care that it stays the same. And I don't want to give that impression. We don't necessarily-- this is to benefit the employees, you know, hopefully in later years if there is an increase. But I don't think that we necessarily want to increase this. I think something we do need to look at is the employee only and employee and child that you had talked about at the last meeting. And I think that needs to be considered before we finalize this this evening.
Let's move on to premiums for employees. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we do not raise. They brought up a good point. I mean, a long time since they've really gotten a raise. And it is a gamble. I mean, the insurance is a gamble. But many of our employees are young and healthy, and God forbid, you know, anything will go wrong. But I think they deserve to get as much as they can right now.
And I'll second that motion based on what the department has. I mean, they're out there in the trenches. We are not. And I'm going to go with your recommendation as well. That's why I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Kristin, what do we lack on this for this year? I mean, we don't have any-- the Medicare, or the Medicare and all that is not--
Well, I brought the material to discuss that, that and the dental, if you would like to see that.
Can we see it and take it under advisement?
Yep.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about is, next year, when you go through this process with you and Dan and the committee, if one of these two could sit on the committee--
I think that's a great idea.
And then, can you give us about a week's notice? I mean, you know, the booklet and stuff that you handed out to us last-- at the last meeting?
Yep.
Could you give that to us any earlier?
It sounds like everything changes all the time.
Well, that's just the-- I mean, the ink was still wet on the proposal when I brought it to you last time. I just brought three up here and I--
I've got one, yeah.
Yeah, you've got one.
Thanks.
Knowing it wouldn't be really etched in stone, so we make a decision. Seeing it ahead of time would give us more--
Let me explain the timeframe--
Okay.
--that we work under. The-- on the stop-loss, we can't get firm stop-loss rates until we have 10 months of claims experience, which means through October. So, we have to get all the numbers in as far as the claims. And we get that number to us about November the 10th. That tells us when our October claims are done running. And then, the carrier gets to see the October claims, and then, they generate their stop-loss numbers based on that. So, and then, of course, this year, we did the haggling, where we haggled between essentially three stop-loss carriers with two third-party administrators. And that really doesn't give us much time. And we were here on the 24th presenting. We presented to Dan, I think, first time was like November 20-- or October 20th or something like that, we presented our first time to the insurance committee. But that is not a firm number until the carrier sees those claims for October. So, we don't have a lot of time in order to operate. So, what I handed out to you, and hopefully, I handed each of these out, is the heart-- the one that says the Hartford 2014, that's the plan that covers the retirees over the age of 65. I don't recall the percentage increase that that plan saw, but it went up about $17.75 a month per member. This is a plan that the city provides to the retirees that are Medicare age on Medicare, and this is a supplement to their Medicare with a prescription drug plan. There was a change. The-- we had a relationship with Silver Scripts that was part of the Hartford package, and Silver Scripts announced that they were going to exit the market. And so, they decided to do so. And then, Express Scripts came in and filled that void for the Hartford. That should be a seamless transfer for the employees. They've done some analysis at the Hartford, and there was, according to what they're telling me, there is no negative impact, and the retirees in that population should be just fine. Now, in the-- last year, we saw a little bit of rate increase in that, and we basically passed that increase along to the retirees. And the proposal in front of you is also doing the same action. So, we're keeping the cost to the city the same for this particular plan design. The number does look like it is up slightly for the city, but we do have one individual that is on the plan as a widower of a individual killed in the line of duty, and the city is paying 100% of that premium for her. And so, that is what the increase is representing there.
So, floor is open for questions for Kristin?
I have no questions.
Well, I've got one. It just stands out. On the Hartford one, Conway, his is higher than anyone else.
Good question.
What's the reason for that?
Good question. She lives in Florida, and there's a different rate class in Florida.
Okay.
All the other retirees now reside in Indiana.
Okay.
Okay?
That's all I have.
So, what would the recommendation be to the board, Kristin?
Well, I definitely recommend to retain the Hartford and do the Silver Scripts. Much like the health insurance, the city has an opportunity to either share in part of that increase or pass that along to the retiree. As far as what are the options? The options in that market are very slim, and I can tell you that that population that is covered by that plan does not like change. So, I'm always squeamish to even mention changing a carrier, so.
So, the motion would be to renew Hartford for 2015?
Correct.
And the added premium would be picked up by the retiree?
Correct.
Which was like $17 and--
Yeah, $17.75. And I know I've talked to a few of the retirees. One in particular at the point that we had the firm numbers, and he said that the $17.75 wasn't earth-shattering, and he felt--
That's per month, right?
Per month.
Okay.
$17.75 as an increase.
And that's effective January?
January 1. We've already got the envelopes ready. We-- I prepare the payment coupons for those folks so that they can just mail a coupon back into the city, and the city employees know what that money is.
Right. All right. You've heard the motion on the floor. Ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Next is the dental insurance. Actually, this is the first year that in the dental plan that I was really discouraged. I reached out to 12 carriers, and of those 12 carriers, five responded with a proposal. Seven refused to propose a plan for the city because they said that the rates that the city was already paying and what the renewal rates would be were going to be something that they could not match. So, this could be a problematic scenario for the city moving forward. This year, we had a rate cap where Kansas City Life, our incumbent carrier, guaranteed that they would raise the rates by no more than 8.9%. And they initially raised them by 9.9, and Dan and I both caught it, and they backed it down to 8.9.
So, what does that equate to the employee?
The employee only is going to be going from $5.24 to $5.71. Family goes from 20 to $21.78. Those are per pay with 24 pays a year. Obviously, a little smaller number than the medical.
Well, I'm curious. Without, you know, going through the complete thing, what does really-- it has very good coverage. Have you used it?
Every pay.
Dental?
No.
24 pays. They're all the same.
Okay.
The three things you worry about with dental insurance is like any other, is the administrative side, which is what Dan and Kristin deal with.
Uh-huh.
The customer-friendly side. Can't see life isn't near what MetLife was back in the past that we dealt with. But we just called Kristin to help guide us through these problems. And then, the other side is if you-- I think we're staying with Kansas City is the last I heard.
Right.
If you stay with the same, then it typically makes things a little bit easier. But the highest rate dentists, as far as use for employees in the city, is here on Main Street, which is nice, and he does accept that insurance, which makes it a little bit easier for a lot of our employees.
That's good.
And they do offer the two different plans. So, if your dentist isn't in the plan, they can go to the higher deductible one, which allows you to seek your own dental that may not accept the insurance. Just it's kind of better for the employees, like Kansas City Life offers.
In all reality, they could take it or not take it.
That's right. If you don't, you can go to the higher-- you pay a little bit more, but then you can go to any nurse you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandy, have questions?
I have no questions.
What would our recommendation be?
I would recommend that the city maintain the Kansas City Life plan for the 2015 plan year. Actually, the rate that renewed today, December 1. So, we'd recommend that the city proceed with that renewal effective today. And then, Dan's got the communication ready to go, I think, for the employees so the employees can see that. And it has the benefit plans as well as the cost per pay in a side-by-side sheet so they can look and see which plan they would like to go with.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. A motion to approve?
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other old business to bring forward. Under new business, we have four items this evening. One is the approval to proceed with the fire engine bid. And I'll read a letter addressed to the board. Dear Board, now that the 2015 budget has been approved and the City-County Council approved an increase in the public safety tax, I would like to recommend that we move forward on the purchase of a new fire engine and ambulance. The first one this evening is fire engine. I recommend that we start the process to advertise for the purchase of a new fire engine. I will defer to the fire chief for the parameters on formatting bids and the pre-bid meetings. This purchase is a result of the public safety tax increase, and the city shall not incur any debt as a result of this purchase. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Operations Chief Pierce, he is actually working and handling on the fire engine bid. With this bid spec, we are seeking a replacement fire engine for Station 57. We're in a use due diligence, and having the price come in under $410,000. That does not include trade-in. The engine that we were-- will be trading in is a 1997 engine that has had a off-chassis rebuild. has had a off-chassis rebid, rebuild. It has numerous electrical issues, and it does have some extensive repair that will need to be done. We do not anticipate a high trade-in value on that vehicle, so I do want to make you aware of that upfront. That, that is one of the problems we have going in. With the bid process, we were put out to bid. Chief Pierce has selected an engine committee who has been in contact with several vendors, brought their products out, shown different amendees on the engines, and what we can expect to receive under that price range.
Questions for the chief?
I have none, thanks.
On the, the bid spec, Rob, I think it's pretty relevant that it states in there that we cannot take delivery of this engine until December of next year. By that way, the funding will be in place to do that. So that has to be in there.
Okay, that, that is no problem. Also, I do need to ask, and maybe refer to the city attorney, will a performance bond be necessary on this vehicle?
I'll have to look into that, that's a good question.
Okay.
Have we done, we done that in the past?
The last engine we purchased, we did not do the performance bond with the, the guaranteed warranties that we received with it, the price reduction by paying cash. We had some options with the performance bond.
Is it going to be, are we purchasing outright, or is it going to be leased, or how, what's the terms of the, that, that's because the financial institution?
This is going to be cash after delivery, but we will receive the vehicle first, make sure it meets our specifications and performance before that is paid. Warranty will be, you know, a big part of this bid process and specification also.
I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, I'm sorry, I've got a question. Is this the same fire truck that was involved in the ambulance at Twenty-Fifth and Albany that you're replacing?
That is correct.
Okay, because I know that one, we've had numerous issues as far as mechanical, and so it would be a good fit for the city.
Yes, and, and like I say, I'm going to be upfront with you, the title, it does have a salvaged title, so there's not going to be a lot of dollars at all for that vehicle.
Didn't you say it was a ninety-seven?
A nineteen ninety-seven.
Great, we get our use out of them.
Yes, we did.
If we get anything, I'd be lucky.
It's a two thousand and two.
Two. Further questions for the board?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation to begin the process to purchase a new fire engine.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Stay there, chief. The second part of this is the ambulance. I recommend that we start the process to advertise for the purchase of a new ambulance. I will defer to the fire chief for the parameters on formatting bids and the pre-bid meetings. This purchase has been placed in the two thousand and fifteen budget under leases, and it is the city's intent to lease purchase this vehicle. I'll ask chief.
Yes, thank you. With this lease purchase, I, I do have to say that the fire department's very pleased with our last two purchases of the road rescue ambulances. They've held up extremely well. Medic fifty-six has close to ninety thousand miles on it, being in service for two years. Mechanically, that truck has been phenomenal for us. We have had some issues with the vehicle. They were repaired quickly. It seems like we're putting tires and brakes on those vehicles quite often, just because of the use that they go through and the mechanical stress. We're very pleased with those. What we're looking at is, we're no accept bids. We want to have ambulance with the same maintenance durability of these last two units, and part of that comes from the chassis. Where these two, last two purchased ambulances were the Ford F-four-fifty gas engines, the V-ten gas, and we're very pleased with the fuel use. They seem to be a lot cheaper than the diesel, and a lot less engine maintenance. So we're very pleased. So that's the type of chassis we're going to have to put on. As far as the box, we're going to remain flexible. We want a vehicle that's going to be durable and meet our needs, but we're going to be cost-driven. We want to keep the cost down on this ambulance, because we would like to start replacing those every three years. So, we want a good, strong chassis, put less money in the box itself, and get a good vehicle for this, this is Beech Grove.
Questions, board members?
I have questions.
Sounds good.
I've got one. This is a five-year lease purchase. I mean, that's the parameters we're going to.
I think what we, I think we'd be good if we just left that up to the clerk to negotiate on behalf of the city.
Okay. We have Dan, and he'll be looking at the lease purchase and the good deals. If we have ambulance that we have good, strong three-years frontline service, and plan to have that vehicle in a reserve status for two years, that's, that's an excellent plan, but as long as we start replacing those vehicles before the life's just ran out of them.
And that's normally what the financial institution wants to know, what is the life of this ambulance? And so if we have to to get it to five, we can do three years active and two years replacement, so, okay.
All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve, to allow the, start the process to purchase the new ambulance.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. There you go, chief. I'll tell you what, two engines and three ambulances in less than four years, that's pretty good.
I'd like to thank the mayor and Board of Works and everyone for their support. The guys see the new equipment, the citizens see it, and we're very much appreciative being able to have the tools and equipment we need to do the job. Operations Chief Pierce is currently, he's working on a grant through the FEMA's, one of the fire grants, and we're looking at replacing air packs. Originally, we wanted to use that, this grant for technology, but the city has a need. We've discussed the need of replacing our air packs in the near future. We're going to try to receive a grant for those air packs. It's not guaranteed, but at least we are out there trying to help out the citizens, save money, help make your job a little, little bit easier with those dollars passing out to the city, so, thank you.
Thanks, chief. The next item is, at this time, I would like to recommend that we start the process to replace the following. One, laptop computers for the police department. Funds were budgeted for this expense. Two, lease purchase of four police vehicles. Funds were budgeted for this expense, and purchase of a vehicle for the senior centers, citizen center. Funds were budgeted for this expense as well. And I'll have the clerk distribute these to the board members. Chief, the first one here is the police vehicles.
Good evening, board. The vehicles that we're looking at all come from a state bid. Myself and some of our EVOC instructors drove all the available vehicles that were for police use, all called pursuit-rated vehicles. If you have this, the letter, it gives the prices of the Dodge Charger at twenty-two thousand and eight, the Chevy Caprice. That Caprice, it's more expensive because it, at this time, is coming from Australia, so I think that's the cost of it. It's twenty-seven, two-hundred. And if you look at the, the Ford sedan, it's twenty-two, eight, fifty-one. That bid is coming from Indianapolis Police Department bid that they negotiated with Ford. The actual state bid is twenty-four thousand. So we're able to go with an all-wheel-drive vehicle that ran on the EVOC course, Emerging Vehicle Operation course. It did better than any of the other vehicles, and we believe it's a safer vehicle, and although all the vehicles are smaller, this one has the most amount of room for the smaller vehicle, and as all-wheel-drive, with the different weather that we have, snow, rain, this would be my recommendation, is the Ford sedan, all-wheel-drive.
Comments or questions from board members?
We're looking to purchase four, correct?
Yes, four police vehicles.
Thanks.
I would not, certainly not recommend the Caprice if it didn't come from the United States. So, you're recommending the Ford sedan?
Yes.
That would also be, we would also lump in the car for the senior center as well.
Same, same type of car?
Same, as another cost savings measure.
That vehicle would actually be rated as an undercover car, wouldn't have spotlights and a few other things that I don't think that they need, but it's still two thousand dollars under the, the state bid. You're saving that much money.
So, any other questions from the board members?
No.
I have none.
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's recommendation to purchase four two thousand and fifteen Ford sedans, all-wheel-drive, for the police department, and one two thousand and fifteen Ford sedan, all-wheel-drive, for the senior citizens.
I'll make said motion.
I'm second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Also, I'll need a motion that will allow the clerk treasurer to negotiate on behalf of the city for the lease purchase of four police vehicles.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Mark, what is the timeframe?
We've been told it's six to eight weeks of build time, and with the holidays coming up, I'm not sure if that is part of that, or it's going to be extended a week or two because of that. So I'm expecting that it's going to be maybe the end of January, first of February.
Okay, so, but as long as we get the process going.
Yes.
Stay right there. We have one more for you this evening. Also, we, in the letter, we talked about the laptop computers for the police department, and the funds were budgeted for this expense. Chief, can you talk to us about the computers for the police vehicles?
The, these are what's considered a laptop computer. We're replacing computers that some are eight, ten years old, with some old technology. We, Lynn, who's the IT guy, Lynn, right away, he has told us that some of our computers are losing their so-called motherboard, which when we replace that, it costs more than a computer. And we started back in the summertime testing different computers, going to different companies, and we tried four different computers, looked at them, looked at the cost of them, and I settled on three to do a study on the GTAC, Fujitsu, and one OEM, these are the companies. The GTAC is a, considered a rugged computer, something that we're using now. It's a smaller one, which we need to have smaller computers. The Fujitsu is a semi-rugged computer, which I don't know how long or how well it will hold up with the car bouncing around. The, and the GTAC and the Fujitsu are computers that we can take out of the car, take into a house, into the station, and type our information in, and with, because we're going a lot less paperless with the county and the surrounding counties, this is how they're going to go. The OEM, Michael, is a computer that is fixed in the car. It's a lot less accessible for us taking out, so it's not one that is user-friendly to what we want to use it as. The GTAC has a camera system on it, which is approximately a hundred and sixty dollars. We have to supply cameras to our officers, and those cameras run up to a hundred and sixty dollars or more. So I figure if we can combine the camera with the computer, we're saving one less piece of equipment we have to buy and maintain, and we have the officers available with a camera that can be sent to the prosecutor or made in the report all at once. It makes it a lot better piece of equipment for us to use. The GTAC you can see is, it's a little bit more expensive, but it's a rugged computer, something that I think that we would use it. I'm not saying an officer's going to drop one, but it can fall, so a rugged one, I think, will be a sturdier, handle the, the car bouncing also.
Floor is open for questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
I have a couple.
Do you consider this a personal safety issue?
The computer, yes, very much so, because the, when you get a computer and it's working right, information comes back to the officer that if you stop a car or run a person, it tells you pretty close to immediately if there's a problem with that person, a warrant to be aware of. If we have computers now that are failing us, we have some that are still in cars, that they have to leave their cars running to keep that computer working, or if you shut it off, that motherboard stops working, so it takes time for the computer to come back up.
How many computers will you purchase, chief?
I'd like to purchase twenty-five.
We budgeted for two thousand and fifteen, a hundred thousand dollars for computers, so that will put you right under the one hundred thousand, depending, which one are you recommending that we purchase?
The GTAC, the rugged, and the one that has the camera available to it.
Ken, if an officer gets out of his car and has a mic on, will this, how will this work? Will this do anything with it?
No, it won't do anything with the computer, but we already have in-car cameras and officers that are mic'd up for those in-car cameras. So, as they, they've been proven that if they go into Walmart and go all the way back into the back of Walmart, this microphone picks that up and can record it. Obviously, it doesn't record the video, but we already have a system in for video and audio.
Will this, uh, the radios are, will this computer, when you put it in the vehicle, will that automatically give it GPS, so you'll know where the car is?
That's an available option to have.
So your recommendation is the GTAC V-one-ten?
Yes.
Okay, other, any other questions?
With the camera feature.
Yes.
I, I got a question. The hundred and sixty dollars is in addition to the thirty-eight ninety-one?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then you have installation. Just the hundred and sixty puts you a little over the hundred thousand. Do we have somewhere else in the budget where we can pull the installation and the additional out of?
Yes, some of the installation, we're only getting four new cars, so I think that's going to be a minimum cost. It will go to our installer for those four cars. The other cars, we have a police officer that will do that. He splits his time, he'll take part comp time and part money, so the installation cost for those sixteen, eighteen cars will be a lot less, and we'll pull it out of another fund.
All right, any other questions?
I have none.
Ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief to purchase twenty-five GTAC V-one-ten cameras. to purchase 25 GTAC V110 cameras for the police department.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Chief, what's the turnaround time?
It seems a little strange, but the build time is about six to eight weeks on these also. I don't know if it's a manufacturer's way of saying six to eight weeks to everything, like 15 to 30 minutes to wait for a restaurant, but everybody seems to be six to eight weeks.
So we're talking about January or February?
About the same time the cars would come in.
All right.
Mark, just for clarification, if I had the financing available to you the middle of January, I mean, that would be plenty sufficient on the vehicles or the computers?
Yes, on both of them, that'd be plenty.
I will start working on that tomorrow.
All right, that concludes new business. Any comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:51. Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, mayor of the city of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, December the 1st, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I'll ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Ed Bell, District Two.
Mary Hughes, Stewart, District One.
Thank you. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with a special presentation from the Department of Metropolitan Development concerning Indy Rezone. Tammy, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Tamara Tracy. I'm from the city of Indianapolis, Division of Planning. And I'm the project manager on a project called Indy Rezone. And it is a project to update our ordinances so that they're more sustainable and livable, walkable, and in general, places that we want to be. Now, I know that zoning is not particularly the most exciting topic, but I, I will do my best to keep you engaged. Zoning is a tool that a community has to use. And frequently, it's used very limited, and other communities use it a lot. It really depends upon everybody's preference. But the reason why zoning can be so beneficial is because it affects our lives in so many ways. And many of those ways are kind of subconscious, because zoning affects our built environment. And we all react to our environment. We, we, we know when we're feeling like we're in a safe place versus an unsafe place. We know when, when the place we are in is conducive to exercise or not conducive to exercise. And all of these things impact our decisions. So I would like for you to keep those thoughts in mind as I continue through this, because I am very mindful that I only have a little, little amount of time, and I want to make sure that we hit the topics and actually the decisions that you, as the City of Beech Grove Council, are going to be, I'm going to be asking of you. Now, zoning is a tool, and most people think of zoning as the map. And frequently, people get in the mail a notice that says people want to rezone their property or they want a variance. That is one element of the zoning, and that is not what this project is about. Zoning is two things, a map and then the rules that go with the map. Frequently, you get involved in changes with the map. We are, on Indy Rezone project, changing the rules that go with the map. So it's very different. The, the rules haven't been changed in almost 50 years. That's why it's really unusual. And so people are like, what are you talking about? So I want to make clear that we're not changing the map, we are changing the rules. It's kind of like what I discovered about golf. And I've been a lifelong golfer, but they change the rules in golf every year. I didn't know that. But we're not, so zoning, once every 50 years, I think we're about due. Now, whenever you change the rules, one of the first things people do is say, wait a minute, do I have to bring my place up to code now? And the answer very strongly is no. Once you are legal, you are always legal. When the new code, the new code is when new development comes or significant redevelopment, like you want to tear down and rebuild, then the new code applies. But if you're legal right now, you can continue on, happy campers, and we're not going to say a darn-gone thing. So I just want to get that out, out of the way. And if you want to follow along, I'm on the permitted use table. To the heart of every zoning ordinance is what you can do with your property, the uses. And that is the permitted use. Right now, in our 50-year-old zoning ordinance, it is very hard to figure out what you can do. The basic question, what you can do. And we have, with this project, simplified this, at least we think we've simplified it, in putting all the uses in broad terms into a permitted use table. We've compressed over, just under 600 individual uses. We've compressed them down into basically 100, a little less than 150 broader categories. And you literally can then look at this table, which is, when it's fully printed, 10 pages long, and you can go across the top and see what districts you can do that use in. So this is one example of how we're making it user-friendly. Because one of the things that we've found is that if you have a difficult ordinances, it makes it difficult for people, and more expensive, quite frankly, for people to reinvest and redevelop in their community. And we want to make it as easy as possible to redevelop and reinvest in our communities. And this is just one way we've made it easier. Other ways include minimal graphics. We're adding over 90 diagrams or graphics to explain what we're, what the regulation is, to make it easier to understand. Now, I mentioned that the permitted use table is the heart of a zoning ordinance. It tells you what you can do on land. We've made many, many, many changes to push land uses down into the lowest and most frequent district as possible. In fact, over 128, I believe, uses we've made easier adjustments to. In other words, they're permitted in lower district. But there are a few districts in which we needed to take them out of, of that district, or few uses we need to take out of the district. And I wanted to bring that to your attention, because this was done at the pushing of residents and neighbors. They, they asked in a very vocal way, through our website, through at meetings, things like that, that, that we remove liquor stores and gas stations from the neighborhood retail classification, which is C3. They're still permitted in C4, C5, C7, and, and the other ones. But they did not want it that close to their homes. So we did remove that, and that's probably the biggest, most notable change that you need to be aware of. The other big thing that is with the Indy Rezone project, and it pertains directly to a question that I'm going to ask for you to deliberate on eventually, and that is, we've added mixed-use districts. And what I mean by mixed-use is that's commercial, retailer, office, either one, and some form of residential. That's mixed-use. It can either be in the same building, or it can be in the same block. Either way, we don't require it, although some communities do require that. We, we opted not to, because we thought it would be more flexible. And we have four mixed-use districts, because those four districts create four different built environments, if you will. MU1 is for the really tall towers. And we don't have many examples in Indianapolis, but one would be the Marat. It's a historic building. It's got commercial, retail, and offices on the first four floors. And then above that, it's residential. That would be an example of that. MU2 is corridor-type development. And that's the, what you see historically, it's gone, it's buildings that are up to the street, and they've just developed right along a street, a corridor. MU3 and MU4 are the, are to facilitate a village. So it's more a village mixed-use. And so that's buildings that are close to the street, but not just along the corridor. It actually goes deeper, you know, like maybe a block, block and a half off of the corridor. So it's for a more robust area. And MU4 is the mix, is the village type, but it also necessitates rapid transit if and when we get it. So we're trying to be ready when, when and if it comes. So those are the four mixed-use districts that we've added. And to be quite honest, they kind of steal the thunder on the whole project, because everybody's excited about them. And on the next page about the mixed-use districts, because they are so popular, is a little bit of information about it. In mixed-use, we relax a lot of things and provide a lot of opportunity for development and redevelopment, but there are some responsibilities with that opportunity. And so with that enhanced opportunity, we do have a few requirements. And that is that we, that, that there's some, what people would call, might call design-related things, but really, basically, they're the elements of a building. We require a minimum level of transparency. In other words, you can't have a blank wall. You have to have some windows so that people can see in and out, because people feel safer that way. And we have lighting requirements. While most people do the windows and do the lighting, there are some times when people don't do the lighting. And it's really important, from a safety standpoint, that we have lighting in these higher-intensity areas. We've also reduced the amount of parking that's required. You can always provide parking, but we are not going to be requiring it. We do ask that there, that the setback of the building matches the existing setback that's out there, so there's some minimum setbacks and some maximum setbacks. And then there's some minimum building heights. We're looking, and it doesn't say floors, it says height. So some, because sometimes people, they can build a tall building, but they don't want to put in a second floor. Last year, you might have recall that Carmel got into trouble with requiring two floors. We aren't going with the floor option, we're just going with the height option. And a lot of the commercial developers really appreciate that. The other big thing, and this is going to come up at the end when I have my two big asks for you, is this, it relates to the big realization that our, our, our community has developed differently over time. And even though they might be in the same district, they have very different flavors in terms of a neighborhood. There are newer neighborhoods now in which they're on a curvilinear kind of subdivision. They have cul-de-sacs, and you whip into your garage, and, and it's all brand spanking new. And, and those areas tend to meet the standards today. Well, back in the day, if you will, they liked things a little bit different. They, they asked for the car, they put the cars in back. Sometimes they use alleys. Sometimes they just have a driveway that went around back their house. And the lots were not oriented along the street. They were more parallel to the street. So they were narrower, but still meeting the lots, minimum lot size. They were just narrow and deep. These are very different aesthetics. And people usually like one or the other. Well, they, if they're in one, they want it to remain one. And if they in a different one, the other one, they want to remain that. They don't like to see them mixed. And so we, in recognizing that, we had to figure out a way to handle that in the same zoning classification. And so we can't, we came up with the idea of a context map, so that we could be context-sensitive with these standards. And so we have a compact context and a metro context. It's not, it does, it kind of starts out following the old city limits of Indianapolis and the old city limits of Beech Grove, and the old city limits of Lawrence. But it's kind of a little bit different than that, but it's similar to that. And that's kind of what, where we started. And that is with the big discussion right now, and that we, we'd like for you to tell us what to do with it, is how that match should be drawn and where those boundaries should be. Because, going to the next page, because there are different standards, or, no, I take that back. The types of standards are the same, but the numbers for those standards are different. And to help you understand that, I have a cheat sheet. On this sheet, you will see the zoning classifications that are in Beech Grove. And you will also see the standard that are different between the metro and the compact. There are other standards, but those are the same. These are the standards in which there are differences. And, and those differences hopefully reflect the pattern that's out there. Because that's what we, we did, is we took, we measured all the setbacks. And then we just took that, took that reduced average and made that the standard. I know I'm running out of time, so I'm going to zip through to, to the end. But I did want to mention, parking standards are greatly reduced. But with that reduction, we are requiring bike racks for many uses, not all, but many uses. And in the compact context area, there are limitations on where you can put the parking. Like you can only put one row in front of your commercial business. And with these changes, we've had some hot issues, and you've probably seen them in the newspaper. They have to do with carriage houses and whether or not those are permitted, and urban livestock, chickens. And so we are wrestling with those now. And if you have any thoughts on the matter, I'd be interested in them, maybe offline, if you will. But those are the hot topics right now that we're wrestling with, in addition to the questions that I have for you tonight, which is, and I realize that I've just gone over this really fast. I am, I spoke to the mayor about this. I am not asking decision tonight or an answer tonight. I'm basically asking or giving you homework. I hate to do that at this time of year. But I have two questions for you, and I think those are the last two pages, I think, in the packet. The first question is, where, or, well, should there be an area within the city limits of Beech Grove called, designated as compact or not? And where should that line be? I, I, the mayor has a map, and it has our first thoughts on the matter. And it's basically the really small core of original Beech Grove. And then the second question is, you're, this downtown area, right now it's on C4. Should it be a mixed-use district? And if so, which one? Two simple questions. I just wish they, but I know they're not going to be simple to get to. be simple to get to. And that's pretty much the upshot of what I have tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions, now or later, and...
Any questions for camera?
No question, just a comment. I just think you've done a phenomenal job presenting everything that you've presented in such a timely fashion, and I don't know how you've done it, but it goes to you, and we'll certainly mull it over.
It's not small, so thank you very much, I appreciate it. I feel kind of bad giving you this, this time of year.
I think we've pretty much kept up with it, and we'll certainly do what we can to come up with an answer. So thank you.
Thanks.
What is the timetable for this to be voted on by the City-County Council?
Well, we would like it as soon as possible, but our drop, we would like it in like two months, if that's possible. But the actual drop dead is later in the spring, when it goes to effective date, which is, I believe we're looking at June or July. It's all still flexible right now, because many, we've got many decisions that are waiting.
All right. Any other questions from council members? Would you be available if someone out in the audience has a question?
Certainly. I can just go wait back there. Let you get on with your business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mayor Ballard liaison here? Please step forward, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I just want to tell you guys how important you are to me, because Indianapolis City-County Council meeting is tonight, but I chose to be here with you all, so.
Great choice.
There you go, that's what I figure. And I also wanted to comment, driving here tonight in the dark, your lighted wreaths on all the light poles look very nice, so. Very village-like. I do have a couple things that I wanted to share with you that are new from the last time I was here. One is, I have set my office hours, I don't think I had done that last time. I don't hold office hours in Beech Grove, but I do hold them in both Franklin and Perry Townships. So on Mondays, I'm at the library from 1:00 to 3:00 in Franklin Township. And on Tuesdays, I'm at the Perry Township Government Center from 1:00 to 3:00. And I'd be happy to chat with anybody that wants to stop by, and talk to me about any issues they're having, or especially in Perry Township, those ones tend to be kind of boring. Nobody comes to the Perry Township Government Building right now, so. Also, I was contacted by Don with the RDC about possibly the city working with Beech Grove to get sidewalks. We talked about that at the last meeting. And, Don, I don't think he's here tonight. But he is a little frustrated by my first response. I talked to DPW, and they quoted almost a million dollars just to do the, you know, few hundred yards of sidewalks that he was talking about. But I wanted to just update you guys that we haven't let that go, we're still asking more questions and trying to see if we can make that work somehow, so.
Which corridor was that?
He's talking specifically on Emerson Avenue, between 465 and Thompson there, or whatever. There's also some on Thompson that he talked about, but Emerson would probably be our first priority, so. I wanted to let you guys know, too, that I've been contacted by, I think his name is Brian Seifert, is how you say the last name, and he is looking to take over the State Farm office on Main Street here in Beech Grove. And he has contacted us about the taxes there. A little steeper than what he had thought, and he's trying to purchase the building right now. So I've contacted our economic development people, and we are working with him to see if we can make some arrangements there, so that buying the building is a feasible option for him. Also, keeping Indianapolis beautiful, I know you guys know about that, because they've done some work, but even though you guys are considered an excluded city, not to keep Indianapolis beautiful. They still want to do projects down here. So specifically, I met with Matt Wakefield, and he is asking me to seek out projects on the southeast side. So if Beech Grove is looking to do anything, especially tree plantings, Keeping Indianapolis Beautiful is willing to help with that. A couple things they have going on right now, youth tree team applications will be opening up in February, so that's open to any Marion County High School students. And it's quite the application process, actually. They have you do some field work, and make sure you're going to work out and everything before they hire you. But it's a great job to help the city, so if anybody's interested in that, they should be looking at the KIB website come February. And also, the Great Indy Cleanup Date for South has been set, it's going to be April 25th. And you can't sign up yet, applications for that, again, won't be out until February 16th. So on February 16th, if you guys are interested in getting a dumpster put anywhere, KIB supplies trash bags, gloves, all that. So if you have, you know, a volunteer group from the high school, or, you know, neighbors, whatever, want to get together, KIB will provide you with a dumpster and all the supplies to participate in the cleanup on April 25th, and then they'll come back and collect the dumpster. It is also the one, there's four of them, one for each of the quadrants of the city. The mayor is going to be at the south side one on April 25th, so I don't know if he'll specifically come. It depends on who all signs up for dumpsters, where exactly he'll go that day. But that's Saturday, April 25th. So hopefully you guys will participate. And that was all that I have that pertains to you guys. Do you have anything for me tonight?
Questions for the liaison? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Move on to reading of minutes and approval. Council, you've been given a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, dated Monday, November 3, 2014. Board is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
Mayor, I have read and understand the Beech Grove City Council meetings from Monday, November 3, 2014. I motion that we accept them as written.
I second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Public comments, I'll defer to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Here's three people that signed up tonight to speak. The first one is Dave Grenoble. Mr. Grenoble, please state your address, and you have three minutes.
Sure. My address is 5439 Bombay Drive in Indianapolis, Indiana. And I'm here this evening at the invite of Dave Harrison. Dave Harrison, and Nathan Rinks, and Donald Webb have challenged me to maybe be a little bit more helpful with some of the comments that I've made. And one of the things that I'm pretty good at is research, so I wanted to bring something to you all's attention, because you're going into your last year of this term, and a couple things you might know, you might not know. And it goes to city ordinances about acting mayor. And it's whenever the mayor is absent, or going to be absent from the city, is ill or injured, he may delegate a member of the common council as acting mayor. With all the powers of that office, the mayor may exercise his power for a maximum of 15 days, in an any 60-day period pursuant to Indiana Code 36-4-5-8, or for any longer period, as may be allowed by statute from time to time. And B, in case of serious illness or total disability of the mayor for a period in excess of 15 days, the president pro temp of the common council shall serve as acting mayor pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code 36458. The term of the acting mayor shall not exceed the term of any such illness or disability. And then 32-3 of the city ordinance, which was passed in 1983, passed 7/1883, on the first Monday of each succeeding January, the common council shall choose from its members, by majority, vote a president or pro temp to preside at all meetings of the common council whenever the mayor is absent. Now, the reason I bring this up is because if you also go to the Indiana Code 3646-A, it talks specifically about excluded cities. Excluded cities do not have a council president. They have a president pro temp. And the president pro temp has no more authority or power than you, or you, or you, or you, or you. Because the only authority they have is given when they have to fill in for the mayor, because he's not capable of doing his duties. So anything that has been signed president of the council, or deemed that a president of the council mandated, would be fraud. So I just want to let you guys know, you guys are excluded city, you can have a president pro temp, and his only responsibilities and only authority is if the mayor is unable to fulfill his duties due to illness or injury. Have a nice evening.
Now that you're here, I'm so glad you're here, because I have a couple things for you. Speaking information you put out there.
Sure.
Couple of people sent me some screenshots of something you posted on a deceased friend's Facebook page. By the way, I love, I love social media. I'm going to read some of the passages you put.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I can't, having trouble hearing you.
No, I said, I love social media. Now, I want to quote some of your passages in this social media site. I found the old, or should I say, missing RDC meetings on DVD. Four boxes of files and documents. Care to comment on that, sir?
Yeah, I've got them all.
Okay. Where'd you find it?
It was stuff that we had requested from the past administration, and the current administration. It's stuff that I've been accumulating since 2005.
What is the year of the record, sir?
I'd have to take a look to see exactly what I've got, but I've got records anywhere from 2006, all the way through 2012, 13, some this year, including some of your invoices.
Good. I'm glad you read them. See why they're from the city. The, whether you know this or not, these missing records were focused on a criminal investigation that was done back in January 2012. I really appreciate it if you would turn those over to us and copy them.
Sure, I'll make copies of them for you. That's not a problem.
We'll be happy to do it for you.
Okay.
Okay, can you have that to us by the end of the week?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Do I need to speak now, or can I wait until the new ordinance on the first reading is read? Because you may answer some of my questions when you go over that.
Oh, you can wait until the ordinance comes up.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Jeff?
If possible, I would like to wait as well.
Thank you, Mr. Grenoble.
You're welcome.
All right, that concludes the speakers for this evening. We'll go to committee reports. All of the committee reports, with the exception of financial, should be admitted to you on printed copy, with the exception of the youth council and the ABC. So we'll proceed to the...
Where is the youth council?
I couldn't connect with Mr. Cox to get him here, save me.
We really need to make an effort to make sure they know about the city cleanup, the Great Indy Cleanup. That'd be a great project for them. A lot of them need service hours.
Financial report, Dan.
Okay. Dear councilors, tonight we have transfer requests that do not raise the budget, and the second, third readings on the additional appropriation requests that do not raise the budget. The $400,000 is for paving, and that will be funded by transferring the 2012 return on investment payment from the sewage to corporate, per Jeff Peters. We also have on the agenda tonight the second, third readings for the 2015 TAW. As in years past, this ordinance will be approved before the Indiana Bond Bank determines the amount needed for the 2015 tax anticipation warrant. We are fortunate to have the credit rating to be able to use the Indiana Bond Bank, because of low interest rate they offer, and they determine the amount needed and the ability to repay. I have received and passed on to you a preliminary sizing from the Indiana Bond Bank. When we began in 2012, we had a tax anticipation warrant of just over $2,396,345. For the year 2014, we had a tax anticipation warrant of just over $2,170,627. This was lowered by over $224,000. If the preliminary sizing from the Bond Bank codes true, our tax anticipation warrant for 2015 will be approximately $1,617,000. This would be over $500,000 lower than last year, and over $775,000 lower than 2012. But we must remain frugal and responsible in our spending and borrowing. Yes, these numbers indicate the city is in the right direction financially, but it does not mean the city has an overabundance of money. It only means we are finally returning to financially stable ground. In November, we paid the last claim on Main Street, so it has completely paid off. We presented to the Board of Works the recommendations from the insurance committee and the employees. The insurance committee consisted of Aaron Genetti Fire Department, James Bond Police Department, Rodney Giffen, DPW, and civilian representatives, David Irwin, and Don Wayland, and myself. The city of Beech Grove is self-insured and holds a health insurance trust for the city employees. The trust is funded for 2015, so it will be the employees' decision if they prefer a small rate, raise in rates this year, to try to prevent a large raise in rates in the future. In addition, I have been working on the renewal for the liability insurance for 2015. That will go before the Board of Works for approval in December. Clerk Mary Duffer has taken a position with Butler University. Mary came to us in April, and we knew her position with the city would only be temporary, until she secured a position that was more suitable to her MBA degree. Since beginning her employment in April this year, and continuing until November 14th, Mary spent a considerable amount of time recording lien releases for the sewage department, some of which dated back to 2009. Mary was able to bring us into the year 2014. Since September, Mary recorded 793 lien releases at a cost to the city of approximately $11,500. Clerk Debbie Springer absorbed the majority of the workload for the corporate side. This was a major undertaking, and I'm glad we are now current. Since November 17th, the clerks in the sewage departments have worked on the remaining 2014 lien releases, and have now brought the city current. Great job by all of them. Going forward, it will be the responsibility of the sewage department to keep the lien releases current. I would be remiss if I did not publicly thank Mary Duffer for her service to the city. We greatly appreciated her service, and we wish her success in her new position. State Board of Accounts still has not released the audit for public consumption. As soon as they do, I will email a copy to all of you. I am expecting that very soon, but until that time, I cannot release the results. As you might recall, I reported to you earlier in the year about a federal ambulance reimbursement program that we become aware of and filed an application for, on behalf of the Beech Grove Fire Department, dating back to 2011. We received our first checks this month in the amount of $82,861.12. That is for the years 2011 and 2012. We created a fund number, ambulance reimbursement, and received that check into that fund. According to the laws governing the fund, the money can only be used for ambulance-related expenses. This is ongoing, so we will file these applications yearly. We have not received confirmation yet, but we believe the reimbursement for 2013 to be approximately $40,000. The city website continues to be a success, and is provided at no cost to the taxpayer. We continue to have wonderful volunteers that assist with updating and posting. Thank you, website volunteers. The homepage on the city website has meetings, informations, that include links to agendas, minutes, ordinances, and more, financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and these are all more than this available on www.beechgrove.com. The bank account balances, as of November 30th, are listed here for the council members, and it's also online for anyone to review. As always, my door is open if you have any questions. Thank you, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Questions or comments for the clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Dan. We'll go to unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. Resolution Number 10, 2014, was tabled in the last meeting, it's up for, to be heard again. And I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution Number 10, 2014. Resolution Number 10, 2014 is the resolution that clarifies the monies dispersed to the Beech Grove Police Department. Whereas the Beech Grove Police Department participates in DEA and other state and federal agency special assignments, and whereas the DEA and other state and federal agencies pay for salaries of the officers that participate in the assignments, and whereas money is issued to the city of Beech Grove for these special assignments... to the City of Beach Grove for these special assignments are currently distributed in the incorrect accounts, and whereas the City of Beach Grove must credit, must credit the correct fund in accordance with Indiana Code 6-1 dot 1-18-7.5. Now therefore be it resolved that the common counsel of the City of Beach Grove desires all monies obtained from the federal or state agencies or officers assigned to special assignments shall be distributed to the Police Department Fund. Now therefore be it further resolved that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Uh, at the last meeting, it was tabled, uh, until we could hear from, uh, City Legal, so at this time, I'll defer to City, uh, Legal to, uh, for an explanation, please.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Um, the, the short answer is, yes, this fund can be set up. Um, it's legal. Uh, but there are two issues. Number one, um, currently, the funds are not budgeted for this, so the council would have to do an additional appropriation. Dan and I talked about that today. Um, the other thing is, and, and I, I'm, it's not my, uh, it's not my position to pass judgment, but as well, this is a good idea, and that's something the council's going to have to have an open discussion about. Uh, again, I have no, I have no opinion on that, but, uh, I think Dan articulated his position at the last meeting, so, so the, the short answer, John, is, is yes, you can do it.
It is legal.
It is legal.
Um, before I, uh, open it up for a comment, I'll ask for, uh, Scott, if you wanted to come up, uh, to address the council.
Thank you. Beg your pardon?
Three minutes, Lieutenant.
I'll do my best. Okay, when you guys were discussing this last time, and even right there, uh, I noticed there was a little bit of confusion, um, and, and I have to be honest, even in the writing of the resolution itself, some of the wording is, uh, doesn't really seem to, um, grasp what the, uh, federal funds go towards, what they do, and how they're used. And by the way, by, by way of announcement, my name is Scott Ferrer. I'm a lieutenant with the Beach Grove Police Department. I've been there 17 years. 10 of those years, I've been the coordinator and liaison to the Marion County Traffic Safety Partnership. Um, first of all, to start with the ordinance, um, I, I, to be honest with you, I think incorrect is a little bit strong wording in that. Um, it's totally legal for the money from the federal government for things like DEA, sex offender sweeps, and, um, traffic projects to go into the general fund. Okay? The question, which, uh, um, Craig Wiley mentioned, is whether that's the correct thing to do, whether that's the ethical thing to do, really. And my point is whether it's the transparent thing to do. All right? Um, just like what was read just a minute ago with the federal ambulance fees coming in, that money is going to be redirected back toward ambulance service-related costs. That's exactly what we're asking for here. Okay? The money for, um, the money that comes in by way of federal grants for these projects, whether they be DEA, sex offender sweeps, or, uh, traffic-related, uh, projects, it's not a, uh, a, a stream of income, um, it's not a revenue, it's a federally, it's, it's a federally funded grant, all right? And grants have grant requirements. Those grant requirements specifically state that it has to be spent on officers working those. Okay? It, uh, if it, if it stays in the general fund, there seems to be some confusion about what it's actually being spent on. Okay? And whether or not it's actually being spent to pay the officers to work. Furthermore, in the ordinance itself, where it says assignments, these are not really assignments. Nobody actually gets told, "Go out and do this." This is something that officers can, uh, sign up for, volunteer for. It gives, uh, the officers the opportunity to, let's say you're a day shift guy, and you don't get very much experience with DUIs, you want to go out and work checkpoints, keep your, keep your skills sharp. It also gives you the opportunity to, um, go out and participate in things like the sex offender sweeps that we did this year. Um, it's a great way to, um, communicate with other officers in Marion County, uh, build rapport with them, build confidence in your department and your abilities as well as theirs. Um, I wanted to address a couple of the, uh, the statements made from the minutes of the last meeting. Um, yeah, like I said, it's fine for the money to go into the general fund, um, but does, but should it stay there, is the question. Um, it was brought up that the, uh, ambulance revenue and senior parks revenue and all that monies brought in go into the general fund and fund the annual budget. Well, um, again, this is not a revenue stream, and police departments shouldn't really be asked to fund themselves. If you ask a police department to fund itself, you're asking for a problem there because you're asking for us to go out and do stuff to make money. We're not a profit-driven thing, okay? Um, that, that, that is put, if you go through the history of policing, that's put some agencies in some hot water. Now, what else was brought up, brought up, uh, during this discussion, uh, was, uh, that, uh, the Clerk Treasurer believed that the resolution was reckless and sets a precedent for other departments to ask for its revenue. Again, this is not revenue. This is very similar to the, uh, federal funds you just heard be approved and be set aside for ambulance, uh, related expenses. It's the same thing. It's federal money that comes down from the federal government that says you have to spend it in this way, and is to be, should be set aside just like that for these grant requirements or these, these grant participation. Okay? If the money's not there, we can't participate in it, and that includes the sex offender sweeps and the DEA, which, by the way, the DEA, uh, that we, that we do, has been very beneficial to the city, allowing us to build a CIF fund that has been used to buy a lot of equipment and fund a lot of programs with the police department. Um, without that DEA participation, we wouldn't have had that, and the city would have had to have come up with the money for all of the equipment and everything that we've bought out of that. Speaking of equipment, while I'm on that, the traffic grants that we get every year give us equipment. We have gotten four radars and two LIDARs. One's on order right now, we'll be receiving here in a few months. LIDAR is the laser, uh, machinery, uh, to, uh, clock speed. It's also given us several PBTs. Um, it also provides a lot of free training for the officers, um, at no expense to the department. Okay? These, the, this equipment comes in, it's part of the grant. All right? And we don't even have to write the grant, that's done by grant writers. We just get to share in the money, you know? Um, let's see, uh... Okay, uh, one thing that was brought up during the last minutes was that the, uh, there was, there was no problem when the audit was done. Again, they're not going to say there's a problem for not putting it back in there, but I think it's the correct thing to do, which is why you're doing it with the ambulance. I think it also is the correct thing to do, it makes it more transparent. I think if you don't do that, then you're trying to guess how much money you're going to get from the Traffic Safety Partnership. You're going to guess how much money you're going to get from the Sheriff's Department to participate in the sex offender sweeps, and you're going to guess how much the DEA is going to allow our officer to work with them. Um, if you're wrong on that, then we wind up with either too much or too little money in the overtime budget. Um, and I think too little is what has been the problem this year. Um, I think that if it's, uh, funded correctly, and you, 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 you account dollar for dollar, I think that's a much more transparent, and I think that's probably the way the, uh, federal government would prefer it to be done. I know that's the way Speedway and Lawrence does theirs. It's paid out of their overtime, uh, fund, and then when the money comes in, at a certain time of year, a special resolution is made, and they refund the money back into the overtime fund.
Scott, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Other questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, you're mixing two different things up there. Criminal Investigation Fund is federal. I agree with that. I do nothing, or my office does nothing with the Criminal Investigation Fund. That's, the chief decides on how that's to be sent, spent, not me. The other is Marion County, like your seatbelt grants, your, uh, OPO, uh, different grants like that. And I talked to, uh, Todd Caldwell today at the State Board of Accounts, and Todd Caldwell said that doing it the way this resolution reads is illegal. The best you can come out is to do an additional appropriation in the year 2015 for any monies that come in off of this. Uh, I talked to, uh, Dan Jones at the DLGF, and, uh, he said that basically what we're doing right now is we are reimbursing the police department with overtime money. So, this money is going back to the police department. We got an additional appropriation on tonight for $20,000. The original amount that came out of the Criminal Investigation Fund before I ever came into office, uh, you were budgeted $30,000. Everything else came out of, uh, the Criminal Investigation Fund. This isn't something that I dreamed up, but since I've been in office and my budgets for the year 13, 14, and 15, the police department has paid zero overtime out of the Criminal Investigation Fund. These monies that are coming in are, uh, you know, they're going back to public safety. It's not, you know, our biggest part of our budget is public safety, so it's not like we're trying to keep them from you. Uh, this year here, you guys spent $120,000 in overtime. So, I, I don't understand what, what the problem is. Anytime you've needed money for, uh, for overtime, we came up with it for you.
Can I respond to that?
Go for it.
Thank you. Um, I'm not confusing the CIF fund with the, uh, federal funds, not at all. I only brought up the CF, the CIF fund because if we did not participate in the DEA, then we would not have a CIF fund. That is completely separate, you're right. I'm not talking at all about that. Okay? I'm talking about the federal funds that come from federal grants. CIF is not a grant, okay? Um, I'm simply talking about the grant funds that pay for the officer to participate in the DEA, in the DEA, okay? Um, and I agree with you, it would be a good way to, um, set it up for 2015 to monitor the money that's paid out and then reimburse that back in dollar for dollar. I believe that's what we're trying to set up now, is a reimbursement back into the overtime fund. Okay? Otherwise, you're just guessing how much is going to be spent to try to put in the overtime budget, you know? And, and I don't think that that's the correct way to do it. I think that you, you, you run afoul of trying to, um, you might wind up then forcing somebody to go out and work some of these projects because you may be in a situation where guys don't work it all year, and you budgeted $10,000 in the overtime budget, and guys weren't interested in working it, and now you go, "Well, we budgeted, somebody's got to get out there and do it." I don't want to be in that situation, that's all I'm saying. So, no, I'm not confusing the two funds at all. Um, and, and I think that, I thought that this resolution, I still think this resolution, is a step toward what you were just saying, is to reimburse it dollar for dollar so we don't wind up with that situation.
Well, what I, the comparison you did was the ambulance reimbursement, which that's for Medicare and Medicaid, and that goes directly to them, just like your Criminal Investigation Fund, which are federal, or drug, uh, proceeds go directly to that fund. This here is, I get the check from Marion County, and it's for seatbelts, whatever.
So they're, so they have a separate line item in the budget?
For?
For the ambulance?
They do with this, yes. It was just created last week or the week before. Yes, for the ambulance.
Okay, so it won't have to stop off in the general fund first?
It goes to the general fund, that's where it was deposited, was the general fund.
Yeah.
But it's federal money.
Right.
Your DEA money comes to the Criminal Investigation Fund, it comes to the general fund sometimes, and then it's distributed out to the Criminal Investigation.
Again, don't confuse the money that the officer makes for working that with the money that he brings in when he seizes money from drug dealers. Those aren't the same. Okay? So if the CIF sometimes stops in the general fund, okay, that's incorrect. The money that, uh, that officer is getting paid in salary to work that overtime that he's working for that, to make those drug arrests, that's different. Okay? Those are two different things. All right? And that money that he's getting paid is not CIF money. That does go to the general fund. Okay? And it doesn't get re-appropriated back out to the CIF fund because that's not part of the CIF fund. Okay? That's part of a federal grant that pays him to be there.
My question to you, I guess, Dan, has, have you guys never been afforded every monies you needed for overtime since the mayor and I have came into office?
Sir, let, let me just say this. I think that it would reduce stress and pressure if we did it this way.
I can't.
Hold on.
State Board of Accounts won't allow me.
Is that the opposite of what Craig just said? Craig, when we started this conversation, you said that it is legal.
It's a legal opinion you can just...
This is, this is who I have to listen to because he's here.
State Board of Accounts is an attorney, as far as I know.
Or me?
I don't think the State Board of Accounts is an, an attorney. I would, I would ask that.
Pardon me, go.
Because it's not budgeted, is that what your position is?
Absolutely. You raise the budget, and you are not allowed by state statute to raise the budget. And that's exactly what this does, and that's the reason why I say the only thing you can actually do is an additional appropriation. Other than that, it's against state statute to do this.
Um, I think that's exactly why the language in the, um, IC code that is included is, is in there. It says, "Notwithstanding any law, the appropriating body of a political subdivision may appropriate any funds received as a grant from the state or from the federal government without using the additional appropriation procedures under Section 5 of this chapter. If the funds are provided or designed, or designated by the state or the federal government as a reimbursement of an expenditure made by a political subdivision." What that means is that you don't have to make, you just have to make a resolution. You don't have to make a total ordinance and have that done. The resolution is all that needs to be done. Which, by the way, um, in, in all candor, in all honesty, that's the way it used to be done before the previous administration took over. When Mayor Wright took over, they stopped doing that. The way it used to be done under the previous administration before Wright was, in the fall, around October, they would make a resolution, and they would appropriate the funds that they received from Marion County Traffic Safety Partnership, because we were not involved in the DEA back then, and that was the only federal fund that we received. Okay? Um, they would account for the monies that they had received up to that point, and they would make a resolution, and they would reimburse the police department overtime. So...
Craig, would, would you agree, by state statute, you cannot raise the budget? Do you agree with that?
As a general premise, yes.
Okay. If what he's saying is, all you have to do is do an additional appropriation sometime throughout the year, in the year 2015. Other than that, uh, you know, you're raising the budget, and you can't.
We're going, we're going to, uh, wrap this up. This is a resolution that is non-binding, so, uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
To approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Question? What do you mean, "non-binding"?
Resolutions, all resolutions are non-binding.
To consider it.
Okay.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Nay.
Uh, passes five to one.
Thank you for your time, everybody, and I'm available anytime. My city email, my phone number, ask me any questions you want. And by the way, I just came before the council as a friend of the council, kind of a, a friend of the council brief to try to clear this up a little bit.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. General Ordinance Number 18, 2014 is up for third and final reading. This time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
I don't, that's not my pack.
General Ordinance Number 18, 2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to heavy items. Whereas in the past, the city picked up appliances left out in the trash for disposal, and whereas the cost to dispose of heavy items collected by Public Works employees continues to rise, and whereas some heavy items have been found to carry coolant gases which are dangerous for employees to handle, and whereas trash pickers or other scavengers generally collect these items prior to the arrival of Public Works employees. Now therefore be it... Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96, Section 9605 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires that the following amendments be included as follows. Section 9604 rates for collection of heavy items. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section 9604, collection of heavy appliances and items. The following items will not be picked up by employees, the Department of Public Works, or any authorized agent on behalf of the City of Beach Grove. Stoves, refrigerators, freezers, microwave ovens, washers, dryers, dishwashers, water heaters, furnaces, outdoor grills, air conditioning units, dehumidifiers, and any other appliance deemed hazardous or dangerous by the Director of the Department. Section 9606, exception for appliance containing freon gases. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section 9606, freon and other gases and liquids. Notwithstanding 9604 or any other provision, employees of the Department of Public Works shall not handle any object, container, or appliance that could or does contain a combustible liquid, combustible gas, flammable gas, or flammable liquid. Citizens who place these items out for disposal shall be informed that a licensed private technician or any company must dispose of these items. The city cannot dispose of these items for them. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to this matter. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above listed ordinance.
Thank you.
Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president and attested by the clerk treasurer, signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 18-2014 is up for third and final reading. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. At this time, I will defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances concerning speed limits in the Carrington and Park Meadow subdivision in the City of Beach Grove, whereas newer subdivisions have not been updated in the Code of Ordinances pursuant to speed limits, and whereas issuing traffic citations may be compromised as a result of not being approved by the legislative body, and whereas citizens who live and travel in these areas should be informed as to what the speed limit is and to have it posted in these areas. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to speed limits. Now therefore be it further ordained that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77, Schedule 4. Speed limits, A, schedule, Schedule 4 speed limits, A, schedule. Two, motor vehicle speed on the following streets shall be limited to no faster than 25 miles per hour. Please add the following. Location, Rutherford Ham Lane, Rutherford Ham Circle, Valburn Court, Lawson Lane, Charnwood Parkway, Timbrook Lane, Timbrook Circle, Middleham Lane, Middleham Circle, Danville Lane, Park Meadow Drive, Park Meadow Way, Park Meadow Court. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above mentioned chapter of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 22-2014 is up for approval on third reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 23-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to charges for heavy collections, whereas citizens sometimes set more disposable items out for pickup than normal, and whereas citizens during the year often conduct major cleanings and accumulate more trash than normal, and whereas the cost to dispose of trash continues to rise, and whereas often citizens remove branches and limbs from trees in their respective yard and place them with the trash for disposal. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for heavy trash and brush pickup. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that this amendment be made. 96.25 charges for special collections. Delete in its entirety and replace with the following. 96.25 charges for heavy trash pickup and brush removal. Fees for the collection of heavy trash and brush are hereby affixed and established by the common council according to the following guidelines. A, heavy trash. One, minimum charge is $25. The Director of the Department of Public Works has the authority to increase the charges based on what has been placed out for pickup, the amount of time to pick up, quantity of trash, and the weight of the trash placed out for disposal, or factors in determining the appropriate charge. Two, maximum charge, $500. The Director of the Department of Public Works shall not exceed this amount for the charge to remove heavy trash. Three, the resident and the property owner shall agree to the preset amount prior to any heavy trash being removed. Four, upon agreement of the set price, the heavy trash will be removed and the service charge will be placed on the next available Beach Grove Sewage Works bill. Five, the date and time of heavy trash pickup will be at the convenience of the Department of Public Works. Six, the Director of the Department of Public Works has the authority to refuse to pick up heavy trash based on health, environmental, or other conditions presented. B, brush. Number one, minimum charge is $25. The Director of Department of Public Works has the authority to increase that charge based on the amount of brush placed out for disposal, the amount of time to either chip or remove, including using a payloader, all factors in on the charge. Two, maximum charge is $800. The Director of the Department of Public Works shall not exceed this amount for the charge to remove brush. Three, the resident or property owner shall agree to the preset amount prior to any brush being removed. Four, upon agreement, the brush will be removed and the agreed set price, agreed to will be placed on the next available Beach Grove Sewage Works bill. Five, the date and time for brush removal will be at the convenience of the Department of Public Works. Six, the Director of the Department of Public Works has the discretion to waive any and all fees for the removal of brush due to storms, accidents, or any other act of nature. Seven, the Director of the Department of Public Works has the discretion not to pick up brush based on the conditions present at the time of the inspection. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above mentioned section. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 23-2014 is up for approval on third reading. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Yeah, I would just like to comment on this real quick. This ordinance, just so everybody knows, is at the discretion of the department head. Discretion, just so everybody knows and clarifies that. Discretion is a very loose term and it's up to him whether or not we get charged, so that's my comment.
Okay. Motion to approve on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Please register your vote. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 24-2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning the police chief and the Criminal Investigation Fund for the Beach Grove Police Department, whereas the Beach Grove Police Department has had, for a number of years, a Criminal Investigation Fund, and whereas the Criminal Investigation Fund is under direct control of the police chief, and whereas the police chief and the clerk treasurer are the only two people that has access over the fund, and whereas the police chief has the authority to purchase equipment and other approved supplies through the Criminal Investigation Fund to fight crime and prevent criminal activities throughout our city. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove based on a recommendation from the State Board of Accounts during an annual audit. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendment be placed in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Add the following. 33.01, police chief, C, Criminal Investigation Fund. One, the police chief has the authority to use criminal investigative funds to conduct police business and undercover drug purchasing operations. Two, the police chief or designee has the authority to pay for the purchase of drugs by using cash. Three, the clerk treasurer has the authority to issue a check to the police chief from the Criminal Investigation Fund to be cashed for the purpose of conducting undercover drug purchasing operations with documentation that the check was issued. Four, the police chief and clerk treasurer have the authority to make a transaction prior to approval of any governing board. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to Chapter 33. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 24-2014 is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. You will hear it at the January 5th meeting on third and final reading. Thank you. General Ordinance Number 25-2014 is up for second reading. I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only, please.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 25 by title only, please.
Ordinance Number 25-2014, an ordinance authorizing the City of Beach Grove, Indiana to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the debt service fund, the fire pension fund, and the police pension fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year 2014 and collected in the year 2015, authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the functional payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 25-2014 is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second?
Second. I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. General Ordinance Number 25-2014 is up for third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read it by title only.
Ordinance Number 25-2014 is an ordinance authorizing the City of Beach Grove, Indiana to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the debt service fund, the fire pension fund, and the police pension fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year 2014 and collectable in the year 2015, authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the functional payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number 25-2014 is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. This time, I will defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance Number 26, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section 1 be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expense of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purpose and specified subject to the laws governing the same. Public Safety Lloyd Fund, Personal Services, Perf, $19,000 requested. Total Public Safety Fund, $19,000. General Fund, Council, Other Services and Charges, Attorney Fees Related to the Investigation of the Clerk Treasurer, Amount Requested, $15,000. Fire, Personal Services, Overtime, $41,000. Police, Other Services and Charges, Repairs and Maintenance, $15,000. Police, Capital Outlays, Computers, $15,000. Police, Personal Services, Overtime, $20,000. Fire Supplies, Medical, $11,000. Board of Works, Capital Outlet, Street Projects, $400,000.
Ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand fourteen on second reading only, please.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
General ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen is up for third and final reading this evening. This time I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance number twenty-six, whereas it has been determined that is now necessary to appropriate more money than what was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purpose specified subject to the laws governing the same. Public Safety Lloyd Fund, Personal Services, perf, nineteen thousand dollars. Total Public Safety Fund, nineteen thousand dollars. General Fund, Council, Other Services and Charges, Attorney Fees Related to the Investigation of the Clerk Treasurer, fifteen thousand dollars. Fire, Personal Services, Overtime, forty-one thousand dollars. Police, Other Services and Charges, Repairs and Maintenance, fifteen thousand dollars. Police, Capital Outlays, Computers, fifteen thousand dollars. Police, Personal Services, Overtime, twenty thousand dollars. Fire Supplies, Medical, eleven thousand dollars. Board of Works, Capital Outlay, Street Projects, four hundred thousand. For a total general fund additional appropriation, five hundred seventeen thousand dollars.
Thank you. General ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand fourteen is up for approval on third and final reading. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, please.
Aye.
Please register your vote. And that concludes old business for this evening. Council will go ahead and proceed with new business. General ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen is an ordinance that we'll hear this evening on first reading. This has been brought forward by the Greenscape Commission concerning trees and sidewalks. So I would like for the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General ordinance number twenty-seven, twenty-fourteen is an ordinance that amends chapter one oh-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove pursuant to trees and flora. Whereas the Greenscape Commission was started to focus on trees and flora and to bring awareness to how important these items are for our city, and whereas rules have been established concerning the planting of trees, inventory of trees, and the types of trees that are recommended to be planted throughout our city, and whereas inspection of trees for removal to prevent migration of insects occurs throughout the year, and whereas the Greenscape Commission desires to have a set of rules concerning sidewalk issues and tree roots. Therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend chapter one oh-five of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to sidewalk and roof penetration. Therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendment be included in chapter one oh-five of the Code of Ordinances. Section one oh-five point one oh, protection of trees and flora, add the following. D, when damage to a sidewalk panel occurs from intrusive trees and tree roots, an inspection should occur by the city. A description of the issue of any photo should be made along with the recommendation to correct the sidewalk panel issue. Prior to any removal of tree roots or tree itself, it is recommended to use one of four recommendations to stabilize a sidewalk panel: temporary patch, sidewalk meandering, sidewalk ramping, and flexible materials in order to save the tree. Should the city decide to remove the sidewalk panel or remove the roots, an ISA certified arborist should supervise the pruning of roots. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to chapter one oh-five. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to chapter one oh-five of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions or comments.
What is an ISA certified arborist? Indiana State, ISA?
I don't know.
He's not out there.
No, he's not out there. I don't know.
Okay, is this gonna be at an added expense for us to have somebody come in? Should we just have this?
We already have an arborist on the...
On the council?
On the Greenscape Commission.
That's all.
If there's no further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading only, the January fifth meeting. Thank you. General ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen is up for first reading only, and I will, I hate to ask the clerk to do this, but I'll have to, I want to ask the clerk to read it into the record.
General ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-fourteen is an ordinance that amends title thirteen, General Offen, General Offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Beach Grove. Whereas, General Offenses ordinance date back to nineteen sixty-seven and are recommended to be updated. Whereas, more and more police officers, firefighters, and civilian paramedics are increasingly called upon to render aid and to dispel potentially violent conditions. Whereas, all property owners must be held accountable to maintain conduct and to provide a pleasant environment for their neighbors. Whereas, the city of Beach Grove cannot allow police officers to spend countless man-hours responding to the same address to mitigate disorderly citizens and unlawful conditions to continue to exist within the city. Now be it ordained that the common council finds it to be in the best interest of the residents of the city of Beach Grove and the general public to provide for the regulation and conduct, it deems to be offensive to prevent vice, disorder, and immorality, and to promote public peace, health, and safety and to this end, the city council and access section. Now be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendments be added to chapter thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances to delete chapter one thirty in its entirety, delete chapter one thirty-one in its entirety, replace with the following: Title thirteen, General Offenses. Chapter one thirty, Public Peace, Morals, and Safety, one three oh, dash, oh one, Definitions. The following words and phrases have the meaning set forth herein. Disorderly house means a building, dwelling, establishment, premise, or place where prohibited conduct occurs, and it includes the outside area contingent to and surrounding the structure, such as a yard or lot under the same ownership. If the building, dwelling, establishment, premises, or place is a multiple-unit dwelling or residence, hotel or motel, or commercial or office building, this definition applies only to that dwelling unit, room, or suite of rooms in the hotel or motel. Office rooms or suite, store, lot, or yard, and in or on which prohibited conduct occurs. Nuisance has the same meaning as set forth in chapter ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances. Occupant means any person over sixteen years of age whose domicile is the property upon which the prohibited conduct has been found to have occurred. Owner means: one, the recorded owner of the property as determined by the records of the Beach Grove Sewer's Department; two, any party with an equitable interest in the property, provided that such equitable interest is recorded; and, three, the trustee of a land trust if the land trust holds titles to such property. Prohibited conduct means conduct or activities occurring in violation of statutes or ordinances relating to any of the following. One, use of sale of illegal drugs or controlled substance as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-eight. Two, prostitution, patronizing a prostitute, or promoting prostitution as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-five dash four. Three, gambling as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-five dash five dash one. Four, battery as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-two dash two dash one. Five, contributing to the delinquency of a minor as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-six dash one dash eight. Six, resisting law enforcement as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-four dash three dash three. Seven, disorderly conduct as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-five dash one dash three. Eight, criminal recklessness as defined in IC thirty-five dash forty-two dash two dash two. Nine, unnecessary noises as prohibited by chapter one oh-two of the Code of Ordinances. Ten, failure to keep vacant property secure against entry in violation of chapter ninety-eight of the Code of, or IC thirty-six dash seven dash nine. Such a building law or any other fire or property maintenance codes constitutes prohibited conduct regardless of whether the city has issued a citation for the violation issued in order to secure or taken action to abate the condition. Eleven, failure to comply with chapter ninety-eight prohibition on public nuisances of the Code constitutes prohibited conduct. Whenever the city has verified the code enforcement officer that such violations has occurred at the property three or more times within a calendar year, such violation constitutes prohibited conduct regardless of whether the city has taken action to abate the condition or conduct, and regardless of whether the city has issued a citation for the violation. Twelve, violations of any of the following Indiana statutes governing the sale, possession, delivery, or receipt of alcoholic beverages. A, sales, delivery, or possession in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash one dash one. B, illegal possession by a minor in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash seven dash seven. C, furnishing a, furnishing alcohol to a minor in violation of IC seven point one five dash seven dash eight. D, including a minor to possess alcohol in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash seven dash fifteen. E, sell or delivery of alcoholic beverages to intoxicated persons in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash ten dash fifteen. F, receipt of alcoholic beverages from a person who does not hold a permit in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash ten dash five. G, purchase of alcoholic beverages from a person who does not hold a permit in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash ten dash seven. Or, H, visiting or maintaining a common nuisance in violation of IC seven point one dash five dash ten dash twenty-one. Visiting means a building which is lacking the habitual presence of human beings who have a legal right to be on the premises or at which substantially or lawfully business operations or residential occupancy has ceased. One thirty point oh-two, permitting the use of real property for prohibited conduct disorderly houses, public nuisance. A, no owner of real property located in the city shall knowingly allow that real property to be used as a site for any prohibited conduct. B, whenever prohibited conduct occurs in or upon a building, dwelling, establishment, premise, or place, the city hereby deems the building, dwelling, establishment, premises, or place to be a disorderly house and a public nuisance. One thirty point oh-three, notice provided to property owner. A, upon a determination by the police department that such suspected prohibited conduct is taking place at a particular premises based upon lawful obtained evidence, including but not limited to personal knowledge of a police officer, information obtained from a reliable source, evidence obtained pursuant to an arrest, or physical evidence obtained by a search warrant or other lawful means, a written notice shall be sent by the police department to the owner as provided herein of the real property and a copy to the tenant or occupant whose premise is the subject of the investigation, revealed suspected prohibition conduct on the real property and the fact that there is an ongoing investigation. B, the notice shall inform the owner that whenever prohibited conduct occurs in or upon a building, dwelling, establishment, premises, or place, the city deems such location to be, to be a disorderly house and a public nuisance. C, the notice shall further inform the owner that he/she shall take a legal action within twenty days of the date of the letter to abate such suspected prohibition conduct, which may include but is not limited to filing an eviction action. D, the notice shall further include a request of the property owner to whom the letter is addressed to specify in writing information concerning the existence of any contract or conditional sale of real estate, commonly known as a land contract, or other person who has a legal, equitable, or possessory interest in the dwelling or dwelling unit, and the pertinent information including but not limited to name, address, and phone number with respect to those individuals. E, any owner or tenant who believes the determination by the police department of prohibited conduct on the premise is insufficient to permit an eviction of the tenant or other occupant may appeal that determination in writing within ten days of the date of the first notice to the city council. F, the decision of the city council shall be final and based upon substantial evidence in accordance with legal principles. The city shall hear such appeal at the first reasonable opportunity, but no less than ten days from the date of giving said appeal owner notice of the date, time, and place of the meeting at which the appeal shall be heard during such appeal and before a decision is rendered by the city council. The city shall not commence an action against the owner for violation of this section of the city code. Failure to appeal to the city council shall not prejudice the rights of the owner and any proceedings under this section. One thirty point oh-four, manner of serving notice. The city of Beach Grove shall provide notice to the owner of the property and the occupants of the property in the manner provided by IC section thirty-six dash seven dash nine dash twenty-five. The city of Beach Grove deems the owner of the property and the occupants on the property responsible for any and all prohibited conduct occurring upon the premise and after receipt of the notice. One thirty point oh-five, notice of failure to take action by the owner. A, if the prohibited conduct has not been abated or an eviction action has not been comm, commenced within twenty days of the first written notice, a second written notice shall be sent to the owner of the real estate by certified mail, return receipt requested, or such other method as permitted herein, and shall inform the owner that the investigation at the premises continuing, and that legal proceedings may be commenced pursuant to this section. Such letter shall inform the owner of his or her failure to take some form of remedial action within ten days to abate the prohibited conduct, including eviction of those persons conducting the prohibited conduct, will result in legal proceedings against that owner for violation of this section. A copy of the notice shall be sent to the chief of police, the city attorney, and the tenant, occupant of the premises. B, if the owner of the property fails to take action, required legal action to abate the prohibited conduct, or commence an eviction action within ten days of receipt of the second notice, the city of Beach Grove may proceed to collect the fines provided in the section and/or proceeded under state law to abate or enjoin any suspected prohibited conduct as defined herein consulting a public nuisance as defined under the city code or state law. One thirty point oh-six, eviction proceedings as a defense. No person shall be charged with violation of this section if such person, A, has instituted eviction proceedings within twenty days of receipt of notice of alleged prohibited conduct as provided herein against the tenant or occupant who suspended prohibited conduct would otherwise give rise to potentially liability under this section. B, has proceeded with reasonable diligence in the prosecution of said eviction proceedings. C, if any eviction proceedings are not completed within thirty days by reason of court order delays in such proceedings, the person charged with the violation of this section must nonetheless move forward expedientiously with any such eviction proceeding. D, has initiated an action under IC thirty-two dash thirty dash eight, S school, or any other similar eviction... or any other similar eviction law which will cause such prohibited conduct to cease upon the property, or E, has requested the assistance of the police department in providing evidence at any evidentiary hearing in an eviction proceeding entered hereunder, and the police department has either failed or refused to appear or to provide evidence in support of the eviction action. One thirty point oh seven penalties. A, it shall be violation of this chapter for any person to knowingly allow his or her property to be used for the activities which are prohibited by this section or fail to comply with the terms of this chapter. The violation is by property address. B, any person who violates any provision of this chapter shall be subject to a civil penalty of two hundred and fifty dollars for the first violation of the dwelling unit. With the second violation, same dwelling unit carrying a civil penalty of five hundred dollars, and the third and subsequent violations at the same dwelling unit carrying a penalty of two thousand five hundred dollars. Each day a violation exists shall be considered a separate violation, and a court may assess a monetary civil penalty for each day a violation exists. The fines for the second and subsequent violations shall be imposed only if the fines, if the person fines was an owner in a previous violation. One thirty point oh eight filing criminal charges. Charging an owner of real estate with a violation of this section shall be in addition to a not substitution for any criminal charges filed as a result of the investigation by the police department against occupants or tenants of that owner's real estate premises, or for use or sale of illegal drugs or controlled substances, gambling, or prostitution. One thirty point oh nine definitions for the purpose of this title, and unless otherwise defined in the code, public nuisance means the doing of an unlawful act, or the omitting to performing duty, or the suffering or permitting of any condition of things to be, exist which act, omission, condition, or things either. One, injuries or endangers the comfort, repose, health, or safety of others. Or two, offends decency. Or three, is offensively to the senses. Or four, unlawfully interferes with, obstructs, or tends to obstruct, or renders dangerous for passage any public or private street, highway, sidewalk, stream, ditch, or drainage. Or five, in any way renders other persons insecure in life or the use of property. Six, essentially interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or tends to depreciate the value of the property of others. One thirty point ten illustrative enumeration. The maintaining, using, placing, depositing, leaving, or permitting to be or remain on any public or private property of the following items. Conditions or actions are hereby declared to be and constitute a nuisance provided. However, this enumeration shall not be deemed or construed to be conclusive, limiting, or restrictive in any way. One, vegetation or construction debris which constitutes an environmental public nuisance under chapter ninety-eight of the code. Two, a condition which causes property become a health or safety hazard unless specifically authorized under existing laws and regulations. Three, accumulation of rubbish, trash, refuse, junk, and other abandoned materials, metals, lumber, or other things. Four, any condition which provides harborage for rats, mice, snakes, and other vermin. Five, any building or other structure which is in such a dilapidated condition that is unfit for human habitation, kept in such an unsanitary condition that is a menace to the health of people residing in the vicinity thereof or presents a more than ordinarily dangerous fire hazard in the vicinity where it is located. Six, all unnecessary or unauthorized noises and annoying vibrations, including noises. Seven, all disagreeable or obnoxious odors and stench as well as the conditions, substances, or other causes which give rise to the emission or generation of such odors and stenches. Eight, the carcasses of animals or fowl not disposed of within a reasonable time after death. Nine, the pollution of any public well or cistern, stream, lake, canal, or body of water by sewage, industrial waste, or other substances. Ten, any building, structure, or other place or location where any activity which is in violation of any city ordinance or state or federal laws is conducted, performed, or in ma- or maintained. Eleven, any accumulation of stagnant water permitted or maintained on any lot or piece of ground. Twelve, dense smoke, noxious fumes, gas, soot, or cinders in unreasonable quantities. Thirteen, the unauthorized obstruction of any public street, road, or sidewalk. Fourteen, any abandoned vehicle. Fifteen, those offenses which are known in common law and state statutes as public nuisances. One thirty point eleven discharging firearms. No person without legal right or license shall discharge or assist in discharging any firearm, cannon, or any other instrument which when fired produces a like effect in the city of Beech Grove city limits. One thirty point twelve interfering with public safety personnel. It shall be unlawful for any person or persons to impede, or interfere, or attempt to impede, or interfere with any police officer, firefighter, civilian paramedic, or any other city official in the performance of his or her duties as an emergency response personnel. One thirty point thirteen disregarding police authority. A, all persons arrested and also those in the vicinity of any police officer is then and there engaged in making an arrest. In the conduct of a police investigation shall respect the authority and lawful conduct of any police officer, authority, and dignity of the local and state government and their enforcement agencies. B, it shall be unlawful for any arrested person or person nearby to belittle, jeer, taunt, ridicule, curse, or make remarks of disparaging or insulting nature, or in any way disrespectful to, of any law enforcement officer or agency in the conduct of any arrest or when any investigation beings, is being made under lawful authority by and duly empowered law enforcement officers. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend chapter one thirty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to chapter one thirty of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Before I open enough for questions or comments, there was two people that wanted to speak.
Carla? Oh, can you state your name and your address?
Carla Richardson, three thirty-two North Fourteenth Avenue. Um, I understand the reason for this ordinance, and I think it's headed towards a, for a good reason. I don't think the wording is very well-written. Um, I'm concerned about if you look at section one thirty oh three notice provided to property owner and go down to E and F. I'm having trouble understanding how the city council is going to be the ones who do the appeals. Um, seems like after three violations, you would either get a ticket or a court date or something and go through our court and not through you guys.
That, that's well taken, ma'am. Uh, as I was hearing this, um, I made some notes. My recommendation would be pass this on the first reading, and we can clean this up on that aspect, because I think you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's my fault. The, the appropriate body would be the city court, not the city council.
Okay. Um, then another question that I had is down in one thirty point oh five notice of failure to take own, action by owner. Um, I, I don't see anywhere in here, it, it looks like this is all based on rental properties. But I don't see where there says anything about homeowners slash rental property. So are you, i- is this ordinance just for rental properties? Where's the homeowner aspect? Because I mean, I rent, but my neighbor owns, so do I have different rules to live than somebody else?
No, uh, it's, it's neutral on its face. Uh, it applies to both renters and owners. The issue is, is trying to put the onus on the owners to take action when we have one of these situations. Uh, it's been, at least in, in the folks I've talked to in other law enforcement agencies in similar towns, that, um, they have to put the onus on the owner, because if they do it on the renter, nothing's going to be done. And, and, and the transient nature of the people who rent these properties.
I un, I understand that. Um, but in this particular ordinance, it doesn't state anything excluding or including homeowners. So when reading this, my question is, 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 who is it just covering? Is it just covering, you can't, you can't exclude one or the other unless it states it in here. Do you understand what I'm, what I'm asking?
I, I think it's neutral on its face for a purpose, but I, I.
It's, it's not excluding anybody, it's including everyone.
But it doesn't say that.
It says owner of the real estate. I own my real estate. You see what I mean? It doesn't mean that you're necessarily a renter. I own, it says right here. Notice shall be given sent to the owner of the real estate. That could be me, I own my house. I own that real estate, not necessarily renter.
Okay, so the notice is not going to go to the renter first, it's going to go directly to the homeowner?
I'm saying.
The landowner?
No, I think it goes to both, doesn't it?
I think so. So I think that's certainly the intent, because again, the, the, the purpose of this is, is to abate the nuisance.
Um, if I'm a homeo, homeowner and you send me a notice and I've had three violations, how am I going to get evicted?
You're not, you're going to be, you're going to pay a fine.
Yeah, eviction's not the remedy, it'll be a fine.
So I'm going to pay after three violations, thirty-two hundred dollars and fifty cents after three violations? And then each day after that, that fee continues on until I've, until I've done what? Say my, my violation was partying at night, music too loud. How do you determine, I mean, does that mean the next, the fourth police call, then I get another fine? Is that how that's determined, or?
Well, hopefully after the first or second time.
I, I agree with the hopefully part, but I'm just trying to clarify.
This will be abated, but, um, what would happen is, an action would be initiated in the city court. We could take it up and there'd be a hearing set, or a trial.
Okay, but according to what, what I've read, if, if I understand it correctly, you're asking the property managers, the landlords of any rental property to evict their tenants after three violations. But then you have a homeowner that has three violations, and what is their penalty?
Eviction can't be a penalty to a homeowner.
That's what I'm asking.
That's who we have against a renter.
So is it right to ask the property managers and the landlords that have a contract, have a lease, have money coming in? Is it right to ask them to evict the people? I, I get the, I get some fines, and I understand you're trying to clean it up, and I get the gist of what this is about. But is it fair for the city to tell these landlords and property owners who they can rent to and who they can't? The fines I can see, because then that's going to help weed them out. But you're tying their hands and allow, not allowing them to run their business and do their job by telling them they have to evict somebody.
Well, I, you know, I, I defer to one, to the chief or the deputy chief to talk about some of the instances they're running into, and maybe that'll address your question.
I'm, I have no doubt that there's tons of problems out there. Don't, I don't doubt that for one minute. But does that give us as a city the right to tell these property owners that they have to break a lease, kick somebody out, depending on what the violation is? I mean, if it's, if it's bored of health issues, or it's something so horrendous that they should be out, most likely that landlord's probably going to get rid of them anyway, I would hope, especially after fees and fines are hit. But is it fair if, if somebody has loud music three nights a week or whatever, um, other than it's a nuisance and it is wasting police? Is it fair for them to be told that they have to evict somebody for that?
You know what? I think most owners are on the ball, and they know what they're doing. I am a property owner. I have an amendment to my lease. One time, you break one of my rules, you're out, you're evicted. You don't have a second time or a third time, it's one time.
And that's great, and that's maybe what we should ask all the apartment complexes and or landlords to do possibly. But until then, all I'm saying is, is I don't know how it's right to ask them or tell them how to do their job, I guess, basically. I, I agree with the fines, I agree with the cleaning it up, I agree, agree with not wasting police resources on some of this, all of that. I'm just saying that if I were, I don't own property, so I have no stake in this. But if I did, or if I managed a, an apartment complex, for you guys to come to me and say, you need to evict this person based on some violations, that should be up to me, because I'm the one renting to them. I'm the one that, that's taking in that money. You know, I mean, a- after I have to pay a few fines, or they have to pay a few fines, chances are it's going to get cleaned up. So I, that's why I'm saying I agree with some of that.
Not only am I representing the homeowner, I'm also representing every one of the neighbors that has to listen to this.
Right.
So yes, I believe three times, and yes, we expect you to kick them out. I'm sorry it's a source of your income, I hope somebody else moves in, but I'm representing everybody in that neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, um, can I ask one other question? Um, if I can remember now what it was. Um, I guess the only other thing, I get, maybe it wasn't a question, maybe it was just a comment. I really did forget, I'm sorry. Um, basically, most of this is already in our compliance ordinances. So is there not a way to just kind of amend the compliance ordinance to have these fines and penalties or whatever in there instead of having to do a whole brand new?
This is a tool for law enforcement, not for our compliance officers. You can see some of the things that is contemplated in here, what they'll be responding to. We would never have one of our compliance people do that. It's, it's purely, this would be something our law enforcement folks fight.
Okay, so then how much extra time? Is that something that I would like to hear from the police department to see if this is something that they're excited about and want to spend this extra time doing to try to help clean it up? Or if this is going to be a lot of added time for them?
We got somebody back here.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Wait a minute, I'd like to hear from the chief.
I'll respond to her question as far as, it's not going to take any more time. We go there. If, if the noise complaint or whatever the complaint is, we get dispatched. But we're not going to just drive around and, uh, stop at your house and knock on the door. We will be there, so it's not going to take any more time.
What, uh, what is your take on this ordinance?
I think it's going to be a good tool. We go and we talk to people. We don't have to write a violation for noise. We already have noise ordinance violations, it's a twenty-five dollar ticket. This is something that continues go, going and going and going. A twenty-five dollar violation for a lot of people is nothing. If it can hit a homeowner and say, straighten these people up, straighten yourself up, quit involving the police, I think that's what we need.
Questions for the chief?
I agree.
Scott and Nathan?
Well, I think, and you are, sir?
Nathan Rinks, I work on late shift. Uh, as an officer on late shift, I think this kind of will apply to us more generally because we deal with a lot of the nuisance runs. Uh, I, I can tell you, you know, in terms of homeownership, we do have a lot of renters here that we have problems with, and it will be nice to hold the landlord accountable for who it is they rent to, and I don't think, if, the way I read it, I don't believe, you're not forcing the landowner to put them out, right? But you're telling them you'll either put them out, you, that's an option you can have to avoid the fee. Is that correct, the way I understand it? So if they said, I like this person, they could stay, they have the option to pay the fine. Obviously, I'm guessing they probably wouldn't do that. But we do have a, a couple of addresses in particular. There was one address, I won't, I won't give the specific address. Uh, I think it was last year that we were there just about every weekend, and it wasn't renters. It was a homeowner, and for something like this, it would be nice, because I think it would have been the wake-up call that this particular father needed in terms of, it was a thirty-two hundred dollars, is that, am I saying it right? I'm, I'm missing the change. Thirty-two hundred dollars. Thirty-two hundred dollars probably would have done the trick to, to end the nuisance. And it was a big problem. There was a shooting there, lots of drugs coming in and out of there, there were fights there at least two, three times a month, there was fights out there that we responded to. I got, I spoke to several of the, the neighbors on that cul-de-sac who were absolutely terrorized. They hated it, they were scared of these people, and, and something like this, I don't believe it'll be, I mean, I'm sure there'll be little incidents, but we don't write violations for, you know, if we come out and someone's having a loud patio party, and we're, and we know they're not an issue, or we know they're not a problem, we don't go there and say, all right, here's your twenty-five-dollar ticket. We might say, hey, the neighbors are complaining, I know you guys are having a cookout, tone it down a little bit. I know there's some parties in Charnwood, I believe, that they have in the summertime, and every once in a while, those parties go a little too late, or a little too loud, we go down there and say, hey, it's time to turn it down. You know, it, this gives us a tool for the addresses that we know are going to be a major issue, or we know there's problems of underage drinking, and it's not subsiding, even as we talk to the parents. If there's drugs coming out of there, and now they're having fights, there's a couple addresses that we go to all the time, because everybody's drunk and everybody's fighting, all the time. That becomes an issue, and it becomes a drain on our resources. When we're there a couple times a week, you know, they practically invite us over for dinner, and they say, hey, we just ordered pizzas, once you come back in an hour, we'll be fighting again, you know? These, the, this happens. It's not a huge amount, but there's five to ten addresses that I'm sure every officer could probably call offhand, but they know we're there all the time. And I, I think this is, gives us a tool to, to address it with real consequences.
And they're both renters and homeowners?
Yes. We deal with renters, and a lot of times, we have land, there, there are landlords who don't care, as long as the check's coming in, they don't care who's there. And there are landlords who do care, and I, and I, I don't think it'll be an issue. I, I believe the landlords who do care aren't going to want people in there that are destroying their property, and that are causing undue light to shine on their, on their property. And, and the ones that don't care, this is going to force them to care. Because you're either going to rent to people, or going to be responsible, or going to be in addition to our city, or you're going to pay thirty-two hundred bucks. And then eventually, they'll figure out who to rent to.
Can I just add one thing to that? One criticism I've heard a little bit of, well, if there's drugs going on there, fights, why don't you just arrest them? Well, arresting somebody takes a lot more probable cause, it takes a cooperative witness, underage drinking parties, we have to be able to get inside the house, and all this stuff. It's a lot harder to do. It's a lot easier to mosquito bite them with a ticket, okay? The burden of proof is much lower, and you can just kind of, they're annoying their neighbors, and so we come out there and can kind of give a little something to annoy them, nudge them in the right direction. It's really a useful tool. And as far as time goes, it'll take a lot less time to do that, and try to get them in the right direction than it would be to try to make an arrest, do an investigation, to get in there to quell whatever the main problem is. You slap them on the hand, and hopefully they'll straighten out. So time, and the criticism of why don't you fix the root cause, because it's a, a lot harder to do.
Excellent point. The way our compliance has worked, since we implemented it, ninety-five percent of the time, when somebody's given that notice, they're not fined, they're given a notice, they're saying you have high grass, you have trash in your yard, you, you, your property's a nuisance, it's taken care of within that grace period before it gets cited in our city court. We've had one case since May that's been a nuisance case, one. The other thing is, the alternative would be, under title thirty-two of the Indiana Code, the city attorney has a private right of action to bring in action, we'd have to bring it in Marion County. By the time it'd be given a hearing, it would be three, two to three years, who knows what's going on with that property. So this is a good tool for law enforcement.
Right.
I have a question. Is our city court familiar with this ordinance?
I don't know if the judge has seen it or not.
No, but.
Oh, sure, absolutely they are. As, as some of you folks know, we, we do a lot of the excluded and include cities here in Marion County for nuisance abatement. I, I know that one town in particular has, we, we've had cases, we call it the disorderly house nuisance, so, and, and this ordinance is very similar to that town's ordinance. So yes, it's, we've seen something very, very similar.
All right. Floor's open for questions or comments.
You still have one more signed up to speak, don't you?
Oh, yeah, right.
Uh, he left.
Oh, did he? Okay.
That was it.
Sorry.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Just thank you, gentlemen, very much, for your input, appreciate it.
I, I would just like to comment, I've been out several times with the officers, and I can attest that there's definitely some, definitely some problem areas that the officers do go to, a lot. My concern with it, though, is the effect on the businesses. I would like to look into it a little further than that, but I'm willing to pass it on first reading, just to get to it.
Oh, that's true.
Okay.
Council, just a little information, you, you approved the budget to do compliance, so since March of this year, we've been doing compliance. And I want to bring you up to date, there's been a total of one thousand six hundred and thirty-three inspections conducted. There's been over a hundred vehicles, abandoned vehicles removed from the city. There has been thirty court summons issued. There's been a hundred and thirteen second warning, with eighty-five percent compliance after the second warning, and there's been seven hundred and sixty-five notices of violation issued since March. Now, you folks did the right thing by passing the ordinance for environmental nuisance. You did the right thing, and we're working with the hotels, you passed rules concerning the licensing of hotels and motels, and now tonight, this is the third leg of compliance, and this is another tool that we can use to help clean up Beech Grove further. So I would.
Kind of, I had something, there have been thirty summonses issued to our court. When somebody's summoned into court, usually they know the jig's up, and they're going to, they're going to pay the fine. So of those thirty, we've tried one, since compliance has been implemented. So that's correct, there have been thirty summonses issued.
So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, on first reading only.
Who makes said motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll hear it on second reading only at the January fifth meeting. We have one more order of new business that was not on the agenda, transfer of funds, and I'll defer to the clerk.
Dear councilors, below is a request for permission to transfer money and appropriations. The transfers do not increase the budget. Transfer fifty thousand from Board of Works paving to the Safe Sidewalks grant. Transfer twenty thousand from Board of Works paving to the Road Sign Grant. Transfer five hundred and fifty dollars from Police Perf to Police Perf nineteen seventy-seven. Transfer thirteen thousand six forty-one fifty-seven from Health Retirees Fund two twelve to the retirees payroll number seven hundred. Fund two twelve has not been used since twenty twelve, it was replaced with Fund seven hundred, which all retirees' expenses, including health insurance, are paid from this fund. This will close Fund two twelve. On the transfer from the Board of Works paving for sidewalks and road signs, I'm not sure that we will use all that money, but I needed to end the year with this. If it's not used for them two grants, it will go back to the general fund for paving.
All right. Questions or comments from council members? We'll do these all at once, ask for a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That concludes new business for this evening. Council comments beginning on my far right. Dave?
Uh, thank you for coming in tonight, and that's it.
I have no comments this evening.
Uh, thank everyone for coming, and I'd just like to let her by no doubt Dan set a record tonight on that last ordinance, it was twenty-one minutes it took him to read. I've asked him to go to speed reading, but.
Do we get to read that in every meeting?
No.
Um, I would just like to say that the last meeting, council members, Mike Jarvis coming to the, to the podium, and speaking on the light for the flag out front that he would like to see. He also stressed the importance of it coming out of city dollars rather than donation dollars. But I'm happy to report that Tom Hannon, I followed up with Tom Hannon, and Simple Electric will be installing it when it's received. I'd also like to commend the mayor tonight on his choice for his shirt, like it's a fabulous selection.
I didn't pay any attention.
I'm surprised none of the councilors got the memo, or followed along.
You guys went shopping together, didn't you?
And I'd also like to say a special thanks to Tim Latimer. Tim Latimer is, most of you don't know this, or some of you do, Tim Latimer has been on the Greenscape Commission for some time now, and he has submitted his resignation for the Greenscape Commission. He's been a fantastic person to see on there, always enjoy his reports, and sorry to see him go. But, but best wishes.
Of course.
No comments tonight?
No comments, thanks for coming up.
All right. One thing that I do have to, to do this evening, I have to inform you that I'm going to call a special meeting of the council for next Monday at seven P M., December the eighth, two thousand fourteen. At seven P M., and it is open to the public, we have to revisit general ordinance number twenty, two thousand and fourteen, and we also have to revisit the pension calculations for police and fire. So that meeting is next Monday, December the eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P M. in East Chambers. And those will be the only two items that we will discuss. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at nine eleven.